We'll call the Door County Board of Supervisors in session for October 28th, Tuesday. Rise for the opposed allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Here.
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 We're all here.
Not here.
It's gonna be one of those days.
We're waiting.
Oh, sorry. I hit it, it just didn't go. Well, some of you are already in.
I'm present.
Motion to present the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mark Miller, seconded by Chuck Brand. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. Correspondents? We got a letter for Roy for appearing before the WCA conference. Must have done a good job, Roy.
Thank you.
And the appointment of Mark Miller to Health Human Services Steering Committee, and the loss ratio for the Sheriff's Department from the county insurance company, and also the signed fund balance. Any questions? Next is public comment. Does anybody from the public want to make a comment? If so, you come forward and state your name, address, and make your comment. Anybody else want to say anything? If not, we'll move on to the Administrator Monthly Report we won't have today. Minutes of the September 30th regular meeting, someone want to make a motion to approve it?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, who made the motion to start with?
Over there.
Okay. Second by Cat. Are there any corrections or additions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Under the supporting the yes vote on the constitutional amendment, on my zoom in the third paragraph, the last part of the sentence just stops kind of in the middle. The constitutional amendment would guarantee such funds remain in the...
Okay.
So, just order to missing.
She was saying technical. It's in the law.
You got it?
That's where it stops.
Yeah. She'll correct that. Any other corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. Joe, you want to come forward and we'll start the proclamation designing the month of October 2014 as Disability Employment Awareness Month.
Good morning, board members and guests. Thank you for coming or giving us some opportunity to recognize and celebrate that we're in the month of disability awareness, National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And I also want to thank you for the commitment that we've made to serve individuals here in Door County with disabilities. We have a great program. Cindy and her staff do a wonderful job in supporting individuals. The purpose of the National Disability Employment Awareness Month is to educate people about disability employment issues and to acknowledge the many contributions of the workers who have disabilities. It's kind of become a tradition now, I think this is our third year in a row where Door County has hosted an event here and had a proclamation, which Dan will read to you shortly. Last year, we recognized local businesses and individuals who worked in the community, and we'd like to do something similar to that today. I think it's important that we remember that we all have a role to play in this process of helping individuals with disabilities get into the workforce. And there's a benefit for all of us as well. This year, this year's theme encapsulates this in three powerful words. It conveys that advancing disability employment is about much more than just hiring people. It's about creating a continuum of inclusion. And the first step on that continuum is expectation. Door County expects to make employment a real choice for everybody. Please join us in celebrating this year's theme, which is Expect, Employ, and Empower. Dan, you want to go ahead with the proclamation?
Okay. I'd like to have a motion for Resolution 2014-83. Then, motion by Mark Miller, seconded by Susan Core. And I'll read it. This is a proclamation designing the month of October 2014 as Disability Employment Awareness Month to the Door County Board of Supervisors. Whereas held each October since 1988, roots dating back to 1945, National Disability Employment Awareness Month, ending is a national campaign that raises awareness about disability employment issues and celebrates the many and varied contributions of American workers with disabilities. And whereas the theme of this year's ending is Expect, Employ, and Empower, and whereas people with disabilities are integral, contributing, productive, and valued citizens of Door County, Wisconsin, and whereas workplaces welcoming of the talents of all the people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy, and whereas that cooperation endeavors such as Door County Department of Human Services partnership with Wisconsin's Division of Vocal Rehabilitation will reinforce the value and the talent that people with disabilities add to our workplace and communities and affirm Door County's commitment to an inclusive community, whereas in this spirit, Door County, Wisconsin is recognizing National Disability Employment Awareness Month this October to raise awareness about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities. And whereas activities during this month will reinforce the value of talent, people with disabilities add to our workplace and communities and affirm Door County, Wisconsin commitment to an inclusive community, now there be resolved that the Door County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim October 2000 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that in so doing, the Door County Board of Supervisors calls upon its employees, schools, and other community organizations in Door County, Wisconsin to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities and to advance its important message that people with disabilities are equal to the tasks throughout this year. Submitted by Daniel R. Ossid, Chairman, Door County Board of Supervisors. Would like to have a voice vote to approve it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. You, Dan. Dan. Joe? I appreciate you.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
Next, we'd like to, we have a short video, but before that, and then a presentation of the awards, but before that, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Mikowski. I hope I got that correct. Area 5 Vocational Rehabilitation Supervisor from the Department of Vocational Rehab.
Hello. Thank you all for coming here today and allowing us to come here and celebrating this special event. DVR assists people with disabilities in obtaining, maintaining, and advancing on the job. We also provide business services and help businesses find pre-screened and qualified candidates for positions that they have open. Our staff serving Door County include our Director, Anna Agabrecht, our VRC Vocational Rehabilitation Counselor, Judy Dwyane, our Business Service Consultant, Jess Seiler, and also we have a Consumer Case Coordinator, Roberta Lap Christiansen. DVR provides short-term services, so it's really important that we have a partnership with the county because we need somebody else to help in this process and we stop, the county's there. So we wouldn't be able to do anything, achieve any of our goals without the county. And we all depend on our local service providers who partner with us, and that's Better Avenues, NEW Curative, and We Are Hope. So locally, what we've achieved this past year as a team together, 17 people have achieved their employment goal, meaning that they have obtained a job that suits their interests, abilities, skills, et cetera. And of all the people that worked with DVR this year, 75% of them were able to do that, obtain employment, and their job was stable before their DVR file was closed. Two people were able to earn their way off of social security benefits. And overall, our region, expanding beyond Door, but the whole region, on average are working 28 hours per week and earning $11.72 per hour. And the earnings that they're bringing in, in about three to four months, cover about what the cost of their services are for DVR. So Jess Seiler, if you want to come up?
I'm a business services consultant for the State of Wisconsin. And basically what that means is I go out to the business world, knock on some doors, make some phone calls, and see if you really want an inclusive workforce. It's a very trendy thing nowadays. So what I mean by that is not only do you hire white people, Asian people, Hispanic people, African Americans, actually now we're getting a new challenge, we have Somalis moving into Green Bay, and so we're placing those also, but also persons with disability. And then you can say, I've got a fully inclusive workplace. It works better with the large companies, however, I'm placing more people in smaller companies nowadays than the bigger companies. It's just an interesting fact. And by way of introduction, some of you may remember Melanie Selvick, they had Selvick Orchard out on Shidle Road there. That's my mother and father-in-law, or was, and they passed away, both of them. I actually married their oldest daughter, Vicki, about 41 years ago. And some of you might have been at my wedding. It was out at the mill, family-style chicken, three and a quarter a plate. See, I knew you would remember. It was a good time. We actually are still landowners up here. We ended up with about 100 acres of the old orchard, and I hope to pass that on to my kids, all my kids, and I have three kids. Hopefully, they'll be landowners up in Door County forever. We love Door County. We've traveled half the world, we've been very fortunate, and Door County's still in my top five places. Although Hawaii's not too bad, Vicki liked it there, but we came back anyway, it was a good place. My biggest claim to fame, or our biggest claim to fame, is we were all members of the Door Drifter Snowmobile Club for 20 years. I mean, that's on my resume. That's how good that is. It was a lot of fun. Actually, also, we were going to spend our eternity here. We bought eight funeral plots over at Mount Olive Church, and so I'll be living here forever. So anyway, if you have a business that you know of, or you own a business and you want me to come talk to you about this, we do have incentives from the State of Wisconsin to help you pay for the training of a person with a disability. Most people just retire them and that's it, we're done, and it's the easiest way. But I'd be glad to come out. So I want to thank you all for coming here this morning, and thank you for your time.
We have just a very brief video to show you. It's a snapshot of John Fleischer, one of the people here today that we're recognizing, and his journey that started with pre-vocational services and has now ended in him working in his dream job. So if we could show that video.
Expect. Employ. Empower. Expect. John always expected to work in the community. Employ. John is persistent in finding meaningful employment in his area of interest. Empower. John is empowered by his employment in the Door County workforce. John's employment journey began with the dedication of his parents, who utilized the family farm as a training ground to teach skills, work ethic, teamwork, time management, and commitment to complete tasks. When John began his community job search, he found that it was easier to show others his skills and abilities than to tell them. His placement support team observed that his training and work in the industrial park enclave was a perfect stepping stone for community employment. John starred in his own video showcasing his skills at performing a variety of jobs. His job coach then used this video to supplement the job interview with potential employers. John was able to utilize supported employment, which can include a full array of services, help in finding a job, and supports on the job to learn and maintain it. Services for job seekers are individualized and based on their needs. Barriers to accessing or maintaining employment are also addressed. Examples are providing transportation resources information, i.e. door-to-door, job coaching through a local placement agency funded by DVR, and county-funded long-term job supports. John was hired at Healthy Ridge Farm owned by Dan Barnard in June of this year. This is an organic CSA farm located just north of Sturgeon Bay. John does a variety of jobs, such as weeding, thinning plants, deadheading, and assisting workers who pick fruits and vegetables by carrying their crates to the weigh area. In the fall, he may have new jobs and is able to get assistance from a job coach to become proficient in those jobs. Dan commented that he only hires nice people because he believes a positive work environment is important. John fits the bill. John is proud to be a part of Dan's business, to work on a team and bring home a paycheck. Employment at Healthy Ridge Farm is a beginning and is built on the values he learned years ago on the family farm, the supports he received on the way, and the encouragement he receives from his employer, family, and friends.
There's always need for an extra set of hands, and different jobs really need to be done. And John helped out with the strawberries, the new strawberry plants, and straightened them up, and snipped the blossoms, and then he went and he helped carry the strawberries so the workers could keep picking. The pickers would pick, and John would just carry the berries back and forth so they could work a lot faster.
Yeah.
And it really made them a lot happier, because they were getting paid by how many they picked, and they didn't have to walk back and forth. All they had to do was pick, so they really liked that.
I know.
So...
I know.
And then, he's been working on the potatoes here, and he's got the potato rows pretty well cleared up, so favorite job here, John?
Pull weeds.
Pull weeds?
Yeah.
Really? Not tasting strawberries?
I'm mad at what way I'll keep them.
Unlike an office building or a factory where there'd be the same work all year long, this really does change by the seasons, and with every season, we need to work to find the right type of job to...
You probably haven't even learned all of your job duties yet, because there might still be things, like for the early fall, and the fall that you haven't done yet.
Okay, I guess you know.
What might be in store for John for another one this year?
I haven't thought past this.
Oh, okay.
They're supposed to be here, man.
We're just trying to keep up at this point. We're just trying to keep up.
Yeah, one thing's... John's persistence is the reason he is employed, and his success in achieving this goal has empowered him to become an integral part of his community.
I'd like to introduce Anna Agabrecht. She is the DVR District Director. She'll do the awards today.
Good morning, everyone. Can you see me by the podium? I'm kind of short, so... Thank you for having us this morning. It's my honor to provide some awards. Our first award for Healthy Ridge Farms. Dan is not able to come today to accept the award, but what I'd like to do... There, that's better. Is to read the proclamation. This is the Exemplary Employer Award. On behalf of Governor Walker and the people of Wisconsin, I am pleased to recognize Healthy Ridge Farm as an exemplary employer in appreciation of their commitment to progressive employment practices that encourage the full participation of people with disabilities. And he signed this on the sixth day of October in 2014. So we'll be presenting this at his business, and I just encourage all of you and members of the community to support businesses that hire people with disabilities. We encourage an inclusive workforce. The individuals we work with are committed to employment, they show up every day, and they work just as hard, if not more, than everybody else. And I also want to recognize John today, the employee on the video, whose favorite job was weeding, so I might see if he can come to my house for a feed. John, we have a certificate of achievement, and it's the Perseverance Award for you, and it's for working tirelessly towards achieving employment. So congratulations. Do you want to take this with you? This is for you.
You want to get it to there?
You can take them both, actually.
You don't have to take the shake.
You want to see this?
Yeah, I'm looking for shake.
You want to see it? Sure, definitely. Go right ahead. Can I move the mic back for you? Okay. There you go. Go for it.
What about that?
You want this up here? Okay. Do you want this too?
Yeah.
Do you want to say a few words before we end the event? Okay.
I get to go ahead and come, find four weeks.
How many weeks have you worked there?
Three weeks.
Three weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't hurt you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That ends our presentation. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break. We're back at recess. The first, well, not the first, second resolution is the Door County revolving loan extension request. Dick, would you like to make a motion and take a second and explain it? Where is Dick? Yep. Okay. Motion by Haynes, or second?
I'll second.
By Chuck Brand. Okay, go ahead, Dick.
This is an extension of a loan that was done back in May of 2010 for Heather and Nate Price for Captain Komodes, and it's going to be extended for a year. Our committee met on October 17th and went over all the details and agreed that this would be okay to go along with the request, providing county board is permissionable.
Okay, I know Sam's back there. He was. Do you have anything to add to that, Sam, or...
I do not.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I don't have any.
If not, go to the voter board and vote. Hold on a second.
You're lying today.
Well, we got to get done by noon.
All right.
Okay. Voter board, the vote, yes or no?
I know. Yeah.
Haynes isn't going to vote. Neither is...
You got to get in.
It's not working.
Yeah, it is. Now it is.
There's working. That is passed on 20 yes, one excused. Next item, Dick, you want to explain the loan, James Olson, make a motion, and we'll give a second, and then you explain it.
Sure.
This is a motion by Haynes, seconded by... Seconded by David Lino. Go ahead, Dick.
This is a new application for a loan, Resolution 2014-85, for equipment involved in a new purchase of $250,000 with Jim Olson Automotive Group LLC. And our committee did meet and go over the details, and it's in the resolution to look at some of the things that you'd like. And that's it.
Tam, you got anything to add to that?
As you've probably seen in the news, Jim is in the process of purchasing the, what used to be Witt Ford, and bringing that into, under his umbrella, the Jim Olson Automotive Group. We are providing some financing to help purchase some of the equipment that he needs to get that dealership up and running.
Okay. Anything, Susan?
Question? One of my constituents wrote about that and asked whether these 22 new jobs are jobs that are already working for Witt.
Yes, they are. They all had to reapply, but for...
So they're not totally branded?
Correct.
Is there any other questions?
Yeah.
We'll go to the voter board when she's ready. Okay, voter board, vote yes or no?
Vote.
Next item is a non-commercial hangar site lease agreement for the airport. Charles, would you like to make a motion? Or Biz? Biz, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2014-86, non-commercial hangar site lease agreement for Carl Stinkie Building Number 53 out of Cherryland.
Is there a second? Second by Chuck.
This is a routine lease agreement with Carl. They're supporting information, backup, and all language that's involved with this lease.
Okay. So anybody got any questions? If not, are you ready? Go to the voter board and vote yes or no.
I'm not ready. Hold on. Hold on.
Hold on.
Now he's...
Now you're ready.
He's all floated in.
Multitasking.
I couldn't hear it. I couldn't see it.
Ready?
If there's a...
Already did.
No.
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 I think I just fixed it. All right.
Wake up the battery.
Oh, gosh.
That has passed on a vote of 20 yes, one excused. Next item is the Compensation Plan. The resolution, I asked for a motion, and then Grant is going to lead us through it to start it with, by the motion to approve as it stands. Motion by David Lino, seconded by Roy Engelbert. Go ahead, Grant.
Okay. Well, to be clear, I'm going to start it out, but I believe Kelly's back there as well as Shirley, and I believe Kelly has a PowerPoint that she's going to present. Briefly, I'll go through the resolution itself. It recites the history of the current base wage compensation plan. One thing you will note about the resolution is that it is clearly goal-oriented and not prescriptive. The details are not spelled out in the resolution itself, but rather are spelled out in the addendum to the resolution. As noted, we adopted the Wage Comparability Study conducted by Witt Fleebak in December of 2013. That included the base wage compensation, the base compensation plan. Then in June of 2014, a Base Compensation Administrative Guide was approved, and I think the important takeaways from that is that a decision was made that our goal is to meet the market average, and if you look at the base wage compensation plan, the midpoint represents the market average. And now we're embarked on what I think is the last couple of steps of getting the Wage Comparability Study up and implemented, that being, what are we going to do for the employees in terms of the base wage compensation plan in 2015, and then in 2016 and beyond. And very briefly, Kelly will go through this in more detail, is we have to keep separate what's going to happen in January 1, 2015, if this is approved, and what's going to happen later on in 2015 for the 2016. And never should the two cross, really. One of the issues we have now that we are at the point that we are going to move forward is the base wage compensation plan, at least from the mid, to the midpoint, has, as it's presented, six steps, the minimum plus six. Now, we have to figure out a way to get the employees on the plan in the steps. There's no real elegant way to do that. And what is being proposed for 2015 to accomplish that goal is first... And what is being proposed for 2015 to accomplish that goal is, first, apply an aging factor to the compensation plan. That's a fancy way of saying you've got to age the compensation plan to keep up with what's going on in the market. If you don't do that, then your compensation plan doesn't meet the market, and the goal of the compensation plan, which is to meet the market, is by virtue of that would fail. Next, what we would need to do is place the general municipal employees, or what is proposed to do, in the six steps based on where they sit presently. What that's going to mean as, from a practical point for 2015, is those general municipal employees with one year of service who fall within the minimum to the midpoint would then be moved to the next step, or moved up one step. Conceptually, with the six steps, there are, there is a 2.5% increase in wages within each step. What this means is that the employees, as they go up to the next step, no matter where they're at, are going to get no more than 2.5% in this step of the process, and many of them will get less. Using, and Kelly, I have examples. Then the final step for 2015 is to apply the CPIU. If you remember back to when we've talked about Act 10, what the state has dictated by Act 10 with our general municipal employees is that they be granted an across-the-board wage increase that is based on a CPIU number that is given by the Department of Revenue to the Wisconsin Employment Relation Commission and applies based on when the collective bargaining agreements are or were up. We have used an annual basis, so it starts January 1 of any given year. For 2016, the across-the-board increase is 1.57%, and that will be given to general municipal employees who fall from the mid to the max of the compensation plan. It will not be given to the protected service employees, that being, in our county, the sheriff's department and the paramedics. Also with the telecommunications, they are the one group of general municipal employees, if you recall, who have formed a bargaining unit, and we have to technically bargain that increase. And that is done on an annual basis, and that will be done starting after November 3, which is when the county's negotiating committee meets to come up with a tentative or preliminary proposal. And then, what we hope to do then, by taking those three steps on January 1, 2015, is then lay the table, so to speak, for 2016, when the performance evaluation system will be developed and implemented. And from 2016 on, within the front half of the compensation plan, from the min to the max, the employees will be moved up, in theory, one step each year, provided they get a satisfactory rating on their performance evaluation. For those employees that fall from the midpoint to the maximum of the compensation plan, there is a yet-to-be-determined performance evaluation and assessment system, and a yet-to-be-determined means of getting those employees the ability to get an increase and the ability to move from the midpoint to the maximum. And that won't be by steps necessarily, and that's why the plan now has morphed into what we call a hybrid plan, where there will be steps at the front end of the plan from the minimum to the midpoint, but not steps from the mid to the max. Those employees that follow above the max are still going to be redlined, aren't eligible for the across-the-board wage increase, and aren't eligible for any performance-based increase. And of course, this is all premised or prefaced on the county board, each budget cycle appropriating sufficient funds to allow these increases to go into effect, and are also going to be conditioned on, again, the performance-based evaluation system, and it's not just going to be automatically awarded whether the employees are in the front half of the compensation plan or the back half of the compensation plan. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Kelly has a PowerPoint, and I think the visual representation might be better than my rather quick oral explanation.
Thank you, Grant. I think Grant really did cover everything very well. This will kind of go over again what he just said. So, let's see, do I need to click this forward? Uh-huh. So as Grant stated before, this is, meet the market midpoint was already decided, and then he just discussed the hybrid, which includes the performance-based steps to the midpoint and the performance-based increases from the midpoint to the maximum to be developed in 2016. This is just a snapshot of what you have in your packet already to show you what the steps look like as they're put into the plan, and that's on page 26 of your Zoom. And in your packet, you have the full compensation plan with all the ranges. This is just a snapshot of the top of them. So as we move forward, as Grant stated, it'd be to age the plan, and then for the general municipal employees, they would be moved up one step. In my memo in the packet, I need to make a correction to page 25, and that is, it states in there that they need at least one step, and I would remove that. I got a little carried away with the steps. And then, the wage increase was based upon the Consumer Price Index U, which is the urban, and it was established annually by the Wisconsin Department of Revenue, which was discussed as well. And then, this will probably help a little with some examples. An employee that started in February of 2014 with less than one year would only be eligible for the across-the-board, the 1.57 effective January 1, 2015. The second example is with an employee that started in February of 2013 with more than one year. So they would be eligible for the across-the-board and moving up one step effective January 1, 2015. This employee could be in step four, depending on what their current wage is. The third example is an employee that started in 2007 with seven years of service. They would be eligible for the across-the-board increase and moving up one step effective January 1, 2015. This employee could also be in step four. So that just kind of gives you an idea of how it will look once they're put into the Short and sweet.
Questions, though? Grant, questions?
Yeah. Anybody got any questions?
Shirley's back there, too, if you haven't...
Shirley's back there. Any other, any, Biz?
Yeah, I don't know if this question's for Kelly or for Shirley, but on January 1st, excuse me, of 2015, the 1.57 across-the-board for general municipal employees with at least one year of service that fall in the minimum to maximum of compensation, is that basically the same employees that got the increase in '14?
Yes.
Actually, Biz, that was a mistake in the packet. The across-the-board wage increase will be applied to all general municipal employees, provided they fall from the minimum to the max. We don't have the condition of the one-year experience like we do with the steps. That was a typo.
So, so basically, it's everyone that's not red-circled?
Correct.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I guess you're satisfied.
Any questions at all? If not, we'll go to the voter board and vote this up or down. Just wait a second. Good? That is voted on 19, yes, one abstained, and one excused. Moving on now, we have a resolution to announce, or not announce, but have the county administrator job filled temporarily, in this case by Grant. Right now, we have on the books that, that Grant is to fill the position, there's an addition onto this one now that we are adding that, I'm just looking where I have him at. One second. This resolution's on the books already, but we're adding for one more, be it further resolved, that due to the resignation of County Administrator Marine Murphy commencing November 4, 2014, and confirming until County Administrator Murphy's successor is appointed, the Corporation Council is hereby authorized to serve as interim county administrator without additional compensation. Would someone like to make a motion to pass this?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck, is there a second? Seconded by Tim O'Connor. Does anybody have any questions? Basically, this is on the books, except for that last that I just read, and this adds to it. No questions? Go to the voter board. Vote yes or no on this item. Leo, I think you've got to get your batteries changed.
We're going to have to change the battery here.
Hold up over there in Sevastopol.
You got it there.
You got a part there. That has passed on a vote of 20, yes, one excused. Okay, ordinance. Map amendment, Van Dean, Durin Trust. Ken Fisher, would you like to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to accept it, Mr. Chairman, and accept the report. And Mariah is in the back, and she's, she'll come up and explain it all.
Okay, do we have a second? Seconded by John Burke. Go ahead, Mariah.
Thanks. The Van Geems are petitioning to rezone the upland portion of their property from high-density residential to single-family 20,000 residential. There's two lots there. There's a little bit of surveying, mix-ups that they're going to have to deal with because there's some overlap shown. But basically, all they want to do is to be able to build a single-family residence on the property. The existing zoning requires a larger setback from the wetlands than the single-family 20,000 district does. They also have no intention of having the property developed in a high-density manner, either with duplexes or some kind of multifamily development, so that's why, another reason they would prefer the single-family residential zoning. Their testimony was that they do plan to combine those into one lot, because there's no actual road access for that southerly lot because of the wetland and the creek, so instead of two parcels, it will most likely become one. And that single-family residential district is actually a better fit with both the town and the county comprehensive plans. Another topic that came up at the hearing is that the town of Union, which has a town-level zoning ordinance, has the whole shoreline of the town, pretty much the whole shoreline of the town zoned, single-family, whereas the county has the northern half of the town zoned in that high-density district, so this will make the zoning for that property consistent between the town and the county.
Does anybody have any questions? Who'll take a voice vote on this for the approval of the report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed. Ken, would you like to make the motion to pass the...
Sure, I'll make a motion to pass the mandatory zoning ordinance 2014-11.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Susan. Are there any questions? We'll go to the voter board for this one. I just got to keep you in practice, that's why I'm moving back and forth here. Did he give you the batteries, Biz, or what?
No, it's a Sevastopol thing.
That has passed on 20, yes, one excuse. Next item is the reconsideration of Resolution Number 9299, County Administrator Coordinator, County Executive. It was suggested by Leo a number of weeks ago that we have a thorough discussion on this item, since we have a chance to change it if we'd so like. Leo wanted to have a, actually, he wanted a special meeting of the county board, and I thought that we probably could take care of it at this meeting. So we're going to open up to discuss, I'll take a motion to approve it as it now stands, and then we'll have a discussion on the pros and cons of it. So would someone like to make a motion for reaffirming Resolution 9299?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. David, can I second? Does anybody want to discuss why we maybe should either go to an executive or to a county administrator coordinator? Go ahead, John. You want to give your speech, John, or?
Well, I was waiting, I was waiting for somebody else, but, yeah, I'll say something. First of all, let me make it perfectly clear that in all my, whatever I say, it is no reflection on any personnel. This is only on the coordinator versus administrator part of it. We were all for two the last time with the administrator. Hopefully, we could learn by our past experience if we want to repeat this. The other thing I would like to say is, if my memory serves me correctly, the nine months we didn't have an administrator, I probably heard less comments on how to county run than when we did have one. And third, I'd like to say something that I read. I read this. Only a fool continues to do the same thing, the same place, the same way, but then expects different results. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I got it off my chest.
Thank you. Does anybody want to discuss some of the pros and cons with this? Everybody, the packet was sent out to everybody by hard copy that you had a chance to read what the good points and the bad points are. Does anybody have any concerns? Going once. Susan?
I think we need to stay with an administrator. I think we're too big an operation to do it with a coordinator, and I am not interested in a county executive.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to make a comment? Leo?
I only had one contact by a resident in the town who thought we shouldn't be going to an elected county executive.
Anybody else? John?
I would support an elected county executive.
Okay.
I did not receive a packet if there was one mailed.
Did you get one? She said it was mailed, there was a back, huh?
It must be an address issue or something.
Does anybody else want to make a statement or a comment, or myself? I definitely think that the administrator is the way to go. I think if we went to a coordinator, administrative coordinator, what would happen is that the duties would slowly be pushed under the administrative coordinator, and in fact, to have an administrator instead of administrative coordinator. I think that was proven the way we did it last time, and all of a sudden, the line is very fine between the two, and the county board gives up the powers from administrator or coordinator to administrator, so in my opinion, the administrator is, for whatever it's worth, is the way to go. Is there anybody else? Dick Haynes?
I would believe the administrator would be the thing, the way to go. I believe that it probably should be a little more input by some more board members when this is approached. I think the last two times, it was pretty much a few, a few people that took care of it, and it was all done. So I would strongly support that maybe more board members could get involved in a committee if, when an application or a thing would be involved.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? Richard?
Well, on page seven of that, of our handout from the university extension, on page seven, the relationship between an administrative coordinator and the board of supervisors is more complex because if the coordinator's level of authority is dependent upon the county board supervisor's view and define the position. So, I guess what Dan just said before is, if you go with the administrator, you're giving up more of the authority of the county board. The county, it all depends on how the county board defines the position of coordinator. In other words, you're going to have more power, more say, if you went with a coordinator. And like John Iya stated, that we've been down the road now three times with the administrator, and I'm not, I'm not saying I'm all for a coordinator, but I'm just, wanted to make the statement that you do have more authority with, if you go with a coordinator, and the coordinator could actually have many of the same authorities of an administrator if the board chooses to go that route. So, that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Anybody else? Leo?
Yeah, if we get someone that can mind the store and do a good job, it would remove from the county board the micromanaging that we all tend to get involved in. And it's not, and all the information that was provided, hard copy as well as on your Zoom, it indicates that you need to get away from that kind of mentality. So, with that in mind, I would say the administrator, we just didn't fluff into something some many years ago. It was a pretty big change, and we made that change. Unfortunately, we had some occurrences with the, the two last administrators, and those are to be expected. I believe the chairman has indicated previously that the lifetime of administrator in any kind of position in county government doesn't last more than five or six years. So, it's not based on the fact that they get booted out, but it is that they either move on to another position, another county, or they get their fill. So, I think we did an educated guess or educated process in which we came up with the administrator, and I would ask that we just stay with that, and if you need more time to think about it, this is not anything we have to do tomorrow or today. Yeah, we can spend a couple of months doing it. So, that all, any, any and all questions might be asked, if there were any.
Anybody else? Susan?
I want to reiterate something Leo just said. This group of packet, articles in the packet, there was one in there that deals with the micromanaging thing, and I thought that was the very clearest explanation that I've seen, which pointed out that we can't micromanage even with a coordinator. We just need to stop micromanaging, period, because that's not what our role is.
The process that we're going to use, whether we go to, it appears that we're going to be one or the other, because we haven't taken a vote yet, is we're going to go to the admin committee next month and try to develop a process on how to hire this next person and develop some guidelines on how to handle it. So, the process might take two, three, four months, for sure. So, it isn't going to be a rush, rush, rush. I think, Grant, last time you were fit for about eight months or something like that.
Yeah, and Dan and I have talked about it, and anywhere from nine months to a year would be kind of the outside edge of what I'd be looking to do as an interim, and I think that's sufficient time to get somebody in here. There is, there isn't a rush, a need to rush.
Joel?
Yes, I'll make one comment, and that's that I'm in favor of the administrative positions myself, and I believe I made this comment several years ago when we went through this, and that is that, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but that position is hired and fired by this body, plain and simple, nothing more, nothing less. Admin committee in the past has been the one that has done the interviews, looked at the resumes, blah, 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 and made recommendations. I think I made the comment then that if this is the body that is in charge of hiring and firing, then this body should also be the one to sit in a room as a body and have a conversation one-on-one, like the admin, with the person coming to be hired, to ask questions, whether it's a closed session or whatever. But, you know, that hasn't happened, maybe that would be a good flavor to let the 21 members ask a question of that person versus taking the recommendation of the five. It's just one more way of possibly vetting ideas and questions and comments to this potential candidate, you know?
That's what we're going to try to do in, in our November. Admin committee has tried to plan a process of how to do that, and we can certainly take that into consideration. By the way, the admin committee's seven, not five.
No, whatever. You're right. I just think it's one more step to give questions.
The other thing, Susan has told me that we should have a definitive evaluation process for the administrator, which we do, haven't really done a good job at the last number of years, so.
Have it in place before we hire.
Yes. Is there any other comments or suggestions, or if not, we'll go to the voter board and vote yes or no on reaffirming this position. Hold on.
So, are we voting? Continue to continue.
We're voting on reaffirm the position of the county board, to stick with the administrator. Okay. Go to the voter board and vote yes or no. This is a pass on a vote of 17 yes, three no, one absent. Okay? Moving on, are there any oral committee reports? Mark?
I'd just like to bring up the fact that we had a wonderful open house last Tuesday at the Highway Department. The Citizens Academy slash Open House Committee had approached the Highway Committee, and they agreed, along with John Colagi, to put this fine event on. So, I'd like to thank the Highway Committee for their cooperation, John Colagi, and first and foremost, the employees of the Highway Department for being there, doing a wonderful job, showing the citizens around, showing them equipment, and generally, everybody there seemed to have a good time. If you're interested on YouTube, if you go to Door County Highway Department, search that on YouTube, there's a nice interview of an employee by DoorCountyDailyNews.com, which you can watch, and I think it went well. Thank you.
Okay. Any other oral committee reports? Committee minutes, does anybody have any questions on committee minutes? Any questions on the vouchers, claims of bills? If not, moving along. Next meeting of county board is Wednesday. Remember this now, November 12 at 9:00 a.m. It's a budget hearing, and it will also be the county fair meeting, correct? And if it extends the next day, so leave the next day open. I don't remember the last time that we went over one day, but there's always that possibility if you get into a disagreement on the budget and that. So, remember, it's Wednesday, November 12, and one of the reasons for that is, according to our state statutes, you can't have the meeting on Veterans Day, and that's why it got moved from Tuesday to Wednesday. If not, determine the time and place for December, county board. We'll probably discuss that at the next county board. You got to discuss it? No?
I can explain.
You gotta have a public.
Yeah, we're trying, we have to, you have to, adopt the county farmland preservation plan and comprehensive plan before December 31 of this year by state mandate, and we need to do a 30-day notice, so I really need to know today what the, what the meeting date's going to be. It doesn't matter, my calendar just went away. It doesn't matter whether it's December 2, 9, or 16, if you're going to stick to Tuesdays, because we can still get the notice in, because we have it written, we just have to turn it into the advocate. So, I don't know if you're going to have other business that day. I can't imagine that hearing's going to take more than five minutes.
Okay, how about, has anybody got any objections to December 16, a Tuesday?
Thank you.
The next Tuesday, the 23rd, which is creeping up on Christmas a little bit, and it gives a chance for the, anybody got any objections? If not, December 16? That's time enough, Mariah, right? December 16 at 9 o'clock is the December meeting. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Biz, seconded by John. All in favor, say aye.